So Ms. Reagan, if you wouldn't mind stepping up. And then you can pull that mic in close to you because otherwise it's tough to pick up.
Thank you. I don't know if everyone has a copy of my resume and the cover letter they do. Okay, because I did bring extras.
So my name is Gordon Andrews.
Troy Garrett.
Hi Troy, and I'm Ashley. Ashley?
Yep.
Hi Ashley.
So I guess we'll go take turns asking questions. So thank you for your interest in the position.
Thank you.
And do you want to tell us a little bit about yourself? And what interests you in taking this position in the town of Halifax?
Yes, I've actually transitioned into the gerontology back in 2000 from the healthcare industry and insurance, of course, and then also to HR. With the industry changing, that is outsourcing a lot of the jobs. I made the transition to gerontology and was glad to do so. I went back to school, had a degree in speech, I have a degree in speech and language, and decided that, you know, that gerontology was where I needed to be. I volunteered and that's how I got involved with the Shine Counselor Program and was a Shine counselor for almost 10 years. But I brought a lot to the industry in terms of Medicare because I had a great background in that area coming from the insurance industry and the lingo. So I developed that. But when the ACA happened, the Affordable Care Act, I decided to actually then venture into becoming a certified application counselor for the state of Massachusetts, which is an honor. So I did that for almost five years before transitioning from Old Colony Elder Services and then into the position that I'm in now. I also went back to school and got my master's in healthcare advocacy because the need for advocacy is out there, you know, especially with the transition of the ACA. And that's what most of our population is struggling with. Not just our older adults or just people with disabilities, but many people today, young population, who were asked to be brokers in a way. But it's all good. I mean, we can work through all these barriers. And that's what I aim to do over the course of time. So I did go back to school. I earned my master's degree last year in healthcare advocacy. And I've been working in outreach for the town of Kingston, which has been an honor. I enjoy all the people. I enjoy working closely with the staff. It's a very difficult decision to, I know that, you know, with my background, and I've been told that I'm overqualified for the outreach position, but it's okay because I love what I do. But I also love the fact, or enjoy the fact of being able to get out there and create programs that the state of Massachusetts is now offering under the Executive Office of Elder Affairs. There's a lot out there. The state wants us to encourage, our, the Executive Office Elder Affairs wants us to encourage some of these programs. I just signed on with the Massachusetts Council on Aging to rewrite their outreach guidebook. Which is, through this pandemic, of course, things have changed. And it's all good because we have to go forward. You can't go back. So the positivity, so this is where I am today and I love what I do. I enjoy working with the community. Community is so important today, especially during the times, you know, with the pandemic and, you know, we have to go forward. And there's so many opportunities out there. And that's what, it's growth opportunity for a lot of municipalities, a lot of businesses today as well.
Thank you. So the women on the board, can you guys hear everything okay?
Gordon, I'm going to turn the AC back off.
Okay.
Contribute some.
Yeah, it is a little warm, but it's, it did rain. We'll do a cool down.
Take a minute.
I'm sorry, probably shouldn't have tapped. Sorry.
That's okay. I just want them to be able to hear everything too.
Microphone, please.
It's a little quieter now with the AC off. Troy?
You ever have to fire anybody in your life, excuse me?
If I have, have I ever fired anyone?
Yeah.
No, I've been in the supervisor's position with Old Colony Elder Services and I had to reprimand and actually add a person, you know, negative review for a person.
How do you deal with a patient that's irate?
A person that's irate? How would I handle a person that is irate? You know, there's-
Especially seniors because they'll tell you around the room, seniors would have-
I'm sorry, I didn't hear. But what I, if a person, you know, there's always this, every person's going to have a different concern. Being able to work with that individuals or individuals or even boards, is always going to be a challenge in everything we encounter today. But I have, I mean, personality wise, working with individuals at every level, I don't have, I don't find that discrepancy, but, you know, we don't always agree. But we do work it out. Things can, depending on the topic, you know, things can change. Sometimes it's not always maybe what I want to see it happen. But, you know, it's a matter of everyone discussing it and working to see how it will work out, if it's advantageous for everyone. So this, depending on the topic too, so.
Do you have any experience in managing a budget for a facility like this?
In managing a budget, yes. My, I mean, you know, I had established, I wrote a grant for the state of Massachusetts for a navigator program. So being, you have to have a budget. That's the reason why I started the HBRC Inc. Was to, back in 2012, when the ACA happened, the Affordable Care Act changed a lot of things for everyone. Not so much for Medicare, but for a lot of individuals. And so therefore I wrote a grant to, in 2016, to work with the community. And so budget wise, you know, you have to have your line items in order. They were looking for more someone in the Lawrence area and, you know, in the larger communities that were in need. So, and the answer to your question, yes. There is, you know, I work with that, you know, on a daily basis too right now in terms of my position and, you know, even basing it out as to what I do and time management. So I work with that often.
If you had to describe yourself in general, your character in one word, what would it be?
Flexible. Approachable? Two words, sorry.
Excuse me. How do you get along with other department heads that may affect what you're doing in your job?
In terms of where I am now?
Yep.
Okay. In terms of where I am now, I mean, I've worked with the Executive Office of Elder Affairs. I work with the Kingston Town Administrator and, well, we have a new town administrator as well. And, you know, we, the staff, the director, current director's, you know, I worked with her for the last three years because that's where I've been at the COA for three years. And I really never had to encounter any kind of true, you know, exposure to that, except for the fact mostly through the director.
How do you feel about public speaking, presenting before a group of people?
I have, of course, with reference to different products, you know, Medicare and understanding Medicare. Understanding, you know, the whole healthcare industry in terms of even just understanding the programs that we offer. And, you know, senior aging, you know, being able to provide options. So I do feel comfortable with that because I am comfortable with the topics.
Actually, I ask you a question on the budget. Have you visited the Council on Aging before?
Yes, I have. Yes, I was there in Halifax in 2000. I volunteered a lot there. Yeah, I was in 2000. I had volunteered heavily actually there because of the Shine. They didn't have the Shine counselor there present. So I would jump from town to town, but I was there specifically to, for Halifax. So I met a lot of people there. And then, you know, coming back to the, that's why I'm back today, actually. And I'm familiar with the area.
The facility is not ideal and the board recognizes that. And I know the Council on Aging directors recognize that as well.
I was going to ask that question. That was one of my questions on longevity.
Yeah.
Okay, so was there going to be, you know, that's my question afterwards.
So there is a plan to look at, to try to do an addition to the museum building down the street. Put a new kitchen, bathrooms, an elevator, and make that space open and usable for the council. And then take the museum artifacts and move them to Pope's Tavern. That's a process that's being looked at right now. So for the short term, the facility is still at Pope's Tavern.
We actually, it was interesting that you mentioned because it was discussed when I was, that was a while ago too. So, you know, that was my question because when I was volunteering, it was discussed at that time that perhaps maybe there would be a change. There'd be some upgrades to the senior center, which there was actually at that time. There was a few things that had changed, the kitchen area and so on. But yeah, there was always that contentious situation, you know, like, you know, especially with, you know, new, other buildings going up.
Yeah.
So I'm aware of that, yeah.
Okay.
But it's nice that it's still on the board, I mean, still on the record to happen.
Yep, we're working on that.
It's a working progress, right? I remember. I remember.
Troy, how would you go about developing relationship with council and key departments?
Developing relationship with key departments? So depending on the departments, of course, there's always that network. Network is so important today, even just to communities with businesses as well. But internally, it's, you have to have that strong core, you know, to understand the dynamics of the direction where we're going to go as a center and programs that would be offered catering to the community. And so, you know, I'm very strong for veterans. I find, and that's what I looked up to see the money spent for veteran services here. So, I mean, the build on up between, you have to have a strong core and then developing other industries, you know, that relates to other, to the community the way we present it as a core group. So, you know, you might have differences in opinion as to how things should develop, but working together is really, really important. And, you know, I strive to always make that happen. It's a team, always a navigate of a team effort. Although, you know, people don't always agree, but there's always a team effort, yeah. In anything we do, because you guys will feel it, the people feel it.
One question, how do you, how do you feel about what the goal is with the Council on Aging?
And the goal in overall through this, through the Massachusetts?
Three important things that a director should have, skills.
The skill sets for a director today is to have a dynamic relationship, to have the relationship with not just the, you know, businesses outside, but of course, the core. We are changed. We're changed. Whether we like it or not, the pandemic has changed the dynamics of everyone in the community. The community, the needs, we have to search the needs from everyone in the community. What are their needs? What can we provide? You know, but also too, working within the realm of what's we're allowed to have, you know, for budget for going forward. But the community centers are COAs. I see them as community centers, utilization for all aspects, caregivers, which is so important today. Caregiving today is a major, major concern. We're all caregivers for someone. And that's where our adaptation to the COAs at some point has to be a community resource. And I have a good, strong background in a lot of resources, connections with our state representative and also the Senator's office as well to work with all the different variables of the different programs out there. So there's so many programs. And as you know, if you Google, Google is a lot of information out there. What's credible is what's important and having to navigate through that. And a center has to provide that to our new community, whether it be a senior adult or caregivers and a person with disabilities or a veteran.
Do you have any hobbies?
Do I have hobbies? Yeah, I run. I do, yes. I'm a runner. I do, you know, work, I do a lot of reading, of course, and developing just different, you know, relationships. I have two beautiful dogs, so I spend a lot of time with the, you know, walking and being active with them. But also too, I guess the pandemic and isolation affects a lot, it has affected everyone. And, you know, I miss, I'm out there waving to everybody, you know, in my community. I just moved into this community. I was down in Plymouth. But, and it's been a really wonderful, just meeting people out there. I enjoy the connection and being able to be outside and, I'm an outside person. I like being outdoors. I like creativity. I like to do, you know, a lot of that type of stuff. But, yeah, and reading.
Why do you think you're the best candidate for this position?
Well, you know what, I'm going to say, I don't think I'm the best anything, you know, but I am going to do one thing. I'm there for the community. I'm sincere. My passion is and drive is to find resources that are going to work as we adapt, as things do change. And working with the staff, working with the town administrator and also the select, you know, select board to, and the board, senior board, to work, to build a community. So I don't say I'm the best, but I'll tell you, you'll get a good bang for your buck. I do provide a lot of information. I do have a great and strong background. And I'll leave the rest up to your decision, you know, to whether or not I would be a good candidate, you know?
I have, are you certified in CPR, first aid?
Yes, we did. We did get the certification in, what was that, October?
Okay.
Yeah, so I can redo that, but we didn't get our certificates, but we got certified.
Okay.
Yeah.
Ashley, do you have any questions?
What is one of your biggest accomplishments that you feel like you've had?
Different position, so as an outreach coordinator, basically the relationships that I've built over the time, the credibility factor in terms of people trust what they get from information and resources. Prior to that, you know, being able to make the connections with the different programs that are available out there. I work heavily with mass health in terms of the different types of programs, whether it be long-term care and whether, or whether it be community health, mass health, which is, that's where the state is aiming to go, of course, or has been aiming to go. But, you know, so I guess, you know, being able to work with all the different people in my, I did so many things. I write, I write an article. I do a lot of connections to the community, bringing stuff to our center so people have good resources. And majority of this information is coming from the state of Massachusetts under their umbrella. So it's going to be concise. It's going to be good information. Our seniors are not. We have to be very careful as to what we do bring in to the centers because there's a lot of stuff out there that people want to sell, you know, and I don't think that's appropriate. I do believe that we have to be very cautious as to what kind of services we provide to our seniors. And I'm very guarded when it comes to our, any caregiver, any older adult and any person with disabilities or veteran, anyone. So I'm very guarded with their information that they get.
Okay. We have five minutes left.
Have you ever been in a position where you did the hiring or someone else to hire you for you?
Yes, I have. Yep, yes, I have. So we actually, then we have the volunteers. We rely heavily on volunteers. So we had interviewed several volunteers at their current position. Prior to that, as a supervisor with Old Colony Elder Services, you know, we had to hire and recommend certain individuals for certain positions to move up the ladder. So I had that option to do so.
Do you have any questions for us?
I'm sorry.
Do you have any questions for us?
Actually, you know, it was good to, I'm glad you brought that up, Gordon, about the direction of the center itself. And I was interested in to see if that was still, you know, I heard it was, but I wasn't quite sure. And, you know, did you feel that, would you feel that a person that's dynamic enough to bring good resources or good, you know, work with you on developing something like that? Or is this going to be more autocratic?
I think for the process that we're looking at right now, it's really to get an understanding of what systems are in the current building at the museum, what needs to be done to bring, if we do an addition to that, what needs to be brought up to speed. I think the help from the director would be more the layout and what kind of addition that we do, like spacing wise, and look at what the needs are. I know that we've done numbers of studies about how big it should be and what's needed. It's going to be how do you take that information, review that, and then give input to what we can actually do with that space.
So what is the square footage we're looking at? Because in terms like the center Kingston, they've done a great job with regard to the, you know, developing the center there that's been there for, you know, a couple of years, over five years now. But it's done, you know, it's a pretty good center. It's one level. It's homey. It's warm. It's actually a great center in that regard. So, but then of course, if you look in the North Shore, they're developing a wonderful center there that in North Andover, which is fabulous. It's huge and it's going to be called Community Center. Plymouth is another, you know, big center. But I guess it's, you know, it's just what is going to be offered in terms of the different programs that too and how we can define each space and what will, you know, really be based on the needs. And apparently there's a survey that's been done.
Do you believe in training your staff if there's educational supplies available for?
Yes, and there's a lot of training available under the state of Massachusetts and the MCOA. Massachusetts Council of Aging offers wonderful training programs. There is so much information that's out there that's very tangible information under our umbrella. And that's what I call, I call it the apple tree. If it's there to be picked, we're going to pick it because it's available to us. And so, yeah, I'm a navigator of, you know, those-
Thank you.
Services.
No questions for us, man, at this time.
So budget wise, I mean, I noticed that, is there, so the expenses that is allotted to the Council on Aging, their salary and also just expenses, could you define what those expenses would be in terms of, it says it's $8,800 in the, you know, fiscal year 2022. 2022, yeah, so they're looking at $8,800 as opposed to $8,571. So it really wasn't that much of a difference, but I was kind of curious as to where that number comes from.
Joe?
Oh, Joe.
It's going to be any expenditure, everything, unless there's a specific line item that's under the Council on Aging, it's any non-wage expense. So everything from postage to office supplies to, I think there's a separate line item for the vans, if there is, and the van expenses go there, but if not, they would go under that also. But basically any operating expenses, electricity is an example, unless it's electricity sub-line item for council, then electricity is also there. So it's probably a bit of a hodgepodge.
Okay, yeah. I mean, it's not, the meals and wheels, you have congregate meal site, right? In terms of, yeah, the congregate meal site, so that's not a part of that. They were doing the lunches though here, so they were making them here. Is that still done? I thought so, that's what she had said. And also too, I mean, I thought grants. I don't see any grants.
So the grants would not appear in the operating budget because it's their own pots of money not appropriated through the town meeting.
Right, right.
So for instance, is the annual formula grant that the Council on Aging receives, that all councils on aging receive across the Commonwealth, that's separated out, but it's not in the budget.
Right, so I looked in the grants under that particular area and so I didn't see heavily investments in grants, or is there, am I wrong?
Well, there's a, I don't, I think there are specific grants that the council has been applying for year after year, like the formula grant, and maybe one or two others. I think the staff there and various directors have applied when there are grants that work within their bounds in the sense of there aren't necessarily a lot of state grants that might be available to the Council on Aging. that might be available to the Council on Aging.
Right, right, yeah, because there is...
If you should get the job, with all the contacts you have, you should know about the grants for the legislators, the centers concerned.
There is. Actually, the Massachusetts, you know, Massachusetts Council of Aging offered a grant just recently, a letter actually, in reference to Apple computers. And so they had offered that grant, and, you know, some towns did apply for it. And it was like almost, you know, it's good $46,000 in, you know, Apple laptop, you know, which is kind of an intersection, too. So, yeah, so I'm just kind of curious just to see where, what type of grant funding beside the formula grants that were offered.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for coming in tonight.
Thank you very much.
And I did have one more question.
Yeah, sure.
If you were offered the job, how soon would you be able to start?
I'd like to give the, you know, give time to my employer, my employer, but I guess there is no time. I mean, absolutely.
Two weeks?
Yeah.
Okay.
It depends on what the town of Kingston wants to do for it.
Okay, all right, thank you very much.
Thank you again.
Thank you. So I'm Gordon Andrews. I'm Ashley DeSessa.
I'm sorry, Eddie.
Ashley DeSessa.
Ashley.
So, thank you for coming in this evening.
Oh, my pleasure.
I guess, would you like to tell us a little bit about yourself and what you're interested in, in becoming the Council on Aging Director for the Town of Halifax?
Sure, sure. I've got over 30 years' experience in human services, working in nonprofits and public agencies. I applied for this position with the hopes of continuing my work with seniors. I've always been interested in developing programs for older adults and people in need. So I'm happy to be here, and I'm happy to be considered for this position.
Do you want to tell us a little bit about what you do right now?
I'm sorry?
Do you want to tell us a little bit about what you do at the moment? I think I saw on here that you're...
Right, right now, I am...
What you've done previously?
I'm sorry?
What you've done previously. So here it says you did the Mansfield Council on Aging.
Mansfield Council on Aging.
Do you want to tell us a little bit about that?
I'm sure. For, I was there for over 23 years. And I started as the community social worker. My prior employment was with the North Attleboro Housing Authority, which is the agency where I became very familiar with the needs of older adults. And I also worked with clients who were residents who were income-limited and getting them housing in that position. And I wanted to continue my work with that particular population. I, I was hired in 1995 in Mansfield as the community social worker. I was the first full-time community social worker. And my position entailed giving services to people and, and information and referral to people who are age 59 and under, people who were in crisis, not necessarily income-limited. But a majority of my client families were income-limited. From there, I assumed to the position of Assistant Director of the Council on Aging and Social Services. It was the same agency. That was in January of 2000, and I managed the transportation program. I managed the nutrition program, and I supervised the staff. Managed the, I produced, edited, wrote and edited the newsletter. So that was a very large undertaking. We did all of our print work after a few years in-house. We used to send everything out to a printer. But then we decided that we could do it in-house, and we did everything from brochures, which I developed, to business cards, to the newsletter, to flyers, everything in-house. So it was fun. It was a great creative outlet. And from there, in February of 2017, my director retired after 35 years. And I was so appreciative of her mentorship, and I took over as director. So there was a lot of work to do. We had lost two other staff members. And we were doing some reorganizing work and refining our programming. So it was an exciting period.
What do you feel are three most important skills to be a Director of a Council on Aging?
Most important skills?
What would you characterize them?
I'm sorry, could you say?
Would you prioritize them? What are the three skills you think you should develop to be a Director of a Council on Aging?
I'm sorry, I...
What, what three skills do you think are prioritized to be the Council on Aging Director?
Oh, wow. Top skills. Well, organization, an ability to work with different groups of people, an ability to collaborate, and the ability to write grants. There are so many different skills that a Director needs to use for a Council on Aging. And I've been doing management for pretty much over 30 years, so I, I feel that I've got all those skills.
Do budgets? Have you done budgets before?
I'm, I'm sorry, I can't, I can't hear you.
Have you done budgets?
Oh, budgets? Yes. I've developed budgets. When I've written grants, I've, I've developed budgets for the grants and for the programs. And I've used Munis, worked with the town accountant to develop our budget, refine our budget. Sure, yes. I've done the state grant. So I've worked with budgets. I've worked with finance. Yeah.
Ashley?
If you could describe yourself in one word, what would it be?
Oh, boy, optimistic.
Are you comfortable with public speaking and presenting in front of a group?
I am. I'm, I'm a little shy, but I, I call up my high school and college drama skills, so what I learned from back then. But I'm fine speaking in public, yes.
Okay.
Have you done any hiring in the position that you're in?
Hiring? Yes, yes. I've, I hired four positions. And in prior jobs, I created positions and hired them. Very early on in my career, I worked in the battered women's movement. I was the Director of a battered women's program in Pittsburgh. And I enlarged that program and hired, created another office and hired a few staff people to...
Have you ever had to discipline anyone?
Yes, yes.
What steps would you take if you had an individual that was...
Well, as Director of the Council on Aging, I actually had a situation that came up. A new hire had publicly humiliated another staff member. And I, she was brand-new. She was two weeks into her employment. And I felt that that was, her treatment of another staff member was not called for. And I told her that I did not think that it was going to work for her in our agency. So I did ask her if she wanted to stay, she could stay. But I felt she needed to resign after her public humiliation of that particular staff person. I think that having people working in this field requires respect for everybody. So, yes, I have had to discipline people.
Have you ever had to deal with an irate client or a patient coming into the...
I'm, I'm sorry.
My fault. I talk softly. Have you ever had to deal with an irate individual coming into your office?
Oh, yes. Oh, yes. Usually, there is a way to de-escalate. And usually, irate people have other issues that are going on. I do, again, have a background in, in working within programs, curbing violence, violence against women and all people. So, yes, I, I do have that experience. If the behavior is a chronic behavior, then I think that it would be very proper for the Council on Aging to discuss with the family member or the person, or both, what steps should be taken to change the behavior.
Have you visited our Council on Aging before? Have you visited our Council on Aging?
I did. I visited it, I think it was late last week, and I did speak with Susan. She told me that there were discussions in the works about space. So, so that would be very exciting.
We are working on those. But seeing the space that there is available right now, do you feel comfortable that if you were hired, you could provide services to our families here in Halifax with the space that we have currently?
Sure. I mean, I, I think flexibility is an important aspect of any public service. And evaluation of space use is certainly, post-COVID, is certainly in order. How can we best use the space? But I understood that only during this emergency is the upstairs being used?
Yeah.
Yeah, while we can figure it out.
All right.
What is one of your biggest accomplishments?
Oh, boy.
Sounds like you have a lot, but I'm curious what your biggest one is.
Biggest accomplishments? Well, I think migrating the program, when I took over as Director of the Council on Aging, migrating the programming from, to, migrating the program to make it more stimulating, more mature and adult-like, offering educational programming. For instance, one thing that I did do was collaborate with the Audubon Society, the Audubon Sanctuary in Attleboro, and had the educator come and do a program on natural history. And it was a, I think it was a four or five-part program. And we had a tremendous amount of people coming every week. It was expensive from the standpoint of what we would normally offer, but it was paid through money that the Council on Aging did have for special programming. And we offered that in the fall, and then in the spring again, we offered it. And they did vernal pool examination, because in the spring, vernal pools appear. So it was a wonderful program, and I knew that, that we were on the right track in offering that program, seeing the different people who had come in, some people that we had never seen before. So that was exciting. It was exciting for me. It was exciting for the board, and it was exciting for the staff.
Are you certified in CPR, first aid, and AED?
Well, I was. So I, that is something my certificate, I was certified for probably, I'm going to say 20 years.
So there's nothing that would prevent you from becoming certified?
No.
Okay.
No.
How would you go about starting this position? What would you do as far as staff was concerned over there?
What would I do as far as staff?
Yeah.
Well, I think the budget dictates how much staffing. It would be nice to see the Council on Aging grow. We do, this... We do, this community is right down the road from Bridgewater. It would be great to start an internship program with Bridgewater if you've never done that. We could take care of some social work issues with some of the MSW candidates who need to do field work. We could do some recreational or educational programs. So I think that there's a way to, in the meanwhile, supplement what the Council on Aging offers by doing some creative exploration and collaboration. In not really knowing what the program use is, I did look to see what the program offerings are. It's very difficult to say where we should go with any kind of programming and staffing But one thing I did develop was an action plan, should I be hired in this position? And if it's okay, I'd like to, I do have a whole packet here, so...
Thank you.
I have, on the top page is a one-year plan. And because the Council on Aging is more than just the Director, it's so important that the board, the town administrator, and the board, the select board, be involved in determining the direct, direction of the Council on Aging. It would be nice to see a short and long-term plan. So that's what I've put before you, among other stuff.
Looks like it's well thought out.
Do you have questions for the board?
Um, not at this point. Susan answered my questions when I sat with her the other day. It was very nice to have the opportunity to come in and speak with her.
If you were offered this position, how soon would you be available to start?
Well, right now, I'm, I'm home. I'm doing an online graduate study. And that work is flexible. But I do have a commitment in early June. I'm watching my grandchildren while my, my daughter and her husband are on vacation. So I would say probably by mid-June sometime.
May I ask a question?
Sure.
I was just, you know, you're, you're currently like the Director or have been the Director of the Mansfield COA. So what makes you want to come to Halifax?
I'm not currently the Director.
Oh, you're not currently the Director. You're doing a graduate work now?
I am, yes.
Oh, okay.
Yes.
I was just curious about that aspect. But it seems to be very organized, so I'm very interested.
Oh, thank you, thank you so much. Thank you.
Well, thank you for coming.
Do any of the Council on Aging Board members have any questions?
Very confident, thank you.
Thank you.
And everything seems to be very well thought out.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for coming in.
Okay. If there are any questions, please contact me.
Okay.
And I'll try and answer them.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
So...
Gordon, you want me to check downstairs, or do you think...
Yeah, I know that Pam gave me a phone call this afternoon saying that the third person might be late and wasn't sure if they were going to make it this evening.
Okay.
So if you want to check downstairs, yes.
Sure.
And she's even developed a short and long-term plan. And she's seen the facilities that she's...
Charlie?
Yeah.
We got an email. Not going to make the interview this evening. Please thank the entire board for their time and consideration. She, she's, she just said, "I'm not going to make the interview tonight. My day went overboard and I'm still driving home. Please thank the entire board for their time and consideration." So we have Thursday as our next interview and...
Is it Thursday or Wednesday?
Thursday.
Thursday at 10:30.
10:30?
Yep. And then...
You might want to wait, you know, mull over. I mean, you may hear from the Council on Aging with recommendations, individual members before Tuesday, hear from other people before Tuesday, and put it on the agenda for making a decision Tuesday if you want it.
Okay, I think that, that's okay. Is, is the board okay with giving us their input as well?
As long as it doesn't stain everyone.
Is the board okay with... Maybe by Tuesday, we won't have to wear these. But if you're okay with that, we'd probably make the decision Tuesday night on who we'd be moving forward with, based on the interviews. Okay, is the...
Well, what we will be doing is, we'll have the, we should be recording Tuesday, I think Thursday's interview also. So you'll be able to... Oh, yeah, no, it's the same format as today.
Okay, so that's it for this evening, because that's all we have on the agenda, is there a motion to adjourn?
So move.
Second?
Second.
Okay, all those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Thank you, everyone.